...for an event meeting. Roll call, Mrs. White?
Dr. Burdley, no, here. Mr. Dottry?
Here.
Mrs. Fanna, here. Dr. Boogart?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rattaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman, here. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Parisi? Ms. Amher?
Congratulations, please.
I proudly, Mr. Supervisor of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, in whose law we believe in justice for all.
Such honor, ladies and gentlemen.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which their business at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montfort Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted in the Montfort Township Municipal Building, all Montfort Public Schools, Montfort Public Library, the Montfort Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you very much. I see ours two reps are not here, maybe if you can come later. We need to attend this report, Tom.
Sure. October is sort of open to week of respect. And, you know, respect is throughout the year. But a lot of our teachers focused on this in classroom lessons this year, this month. Just to start off, we are a nationally recognized district of character. Character education, kindness, different examples like that were done throughout classrooms, throughout the whole district. We also saw it in different ways. Saw a lot of students working on STEAM projects, working together collaboratively, trying to figure out problems and resolve them. You saw students working together. I was in a third grade class and one of the teachers brought all these little pumpkins and they were working together and figuring out buoyancy and density and different things like that. There was a different way of seeing collaboration and mixing in the whole October theme. We also had at high school, a lot of breast cancer awareness, fundraising and things like that. So there's lots of different ways that we saw respect, kindness, and things that we really want to see in our students. Yesterday, we also saw a sense of normalcy with the different Halloween parades and different class parties. People were very excited to be back, you know, back to normal, as you would say from a couple of years ago. So that was really exciting. And then I just want to say, I was at Woodmont the other day and the sheriff was invited, the sheriff from the county was invited to come in. And he swore in all the safety control students, you know. So it was great seeing the fifth graders standing up there, raising their right hand and stuff like that. But right before that, I had a chance to interact with a lot of them. And I just said, okay, what do you want to be when you grow up and all that? I had four women, four girls, say that they want to be scientists. And a number of others once said they want to be veterinarians. A few doctors were out there. And I had one student said that he wants to work with satellite images. And I just said, you know, I don't know what that means, but I know you're going to go far. So, you know, for that to be on that child's radar in fifth grade already was just incredible. And the excitement when the girls shared that they want to be scientists, you just saw that. And that's all coming from these buoyancy projects, working with pumpkins and all these other things we're getting used to or getting exposed to in class. So very exciting month.
Okay. You, we didn't have that part of the presentation by Dr. Shorter. This is the agenda. Because you have the screens here, we have the data also. Casey?
Thank you, Charlie. Hopefully everyone can see that. I know that the presentation was distributed ahead of time. This is the time of year where I present to you the annual report of student performance for 2021-22. As usual, I'm going to show you a lot of numbers today. I apologize ahead of time. The New Jersey Department of Education has pretty strict guidelines of exactly what we have to present when it comes to standardized testing publicly to the Board of Education. So there's essentially a template that the district has to follow and includes certain things. A lot of that incorporates a lot of numbers. So the first part of the presentation, you'll see the results of standardized testing that the district has to administer from the New Jersey Department of Ed. And it seems like we have a growing list of tests that the district has to administer. So I'll share some information about that and then we'll move through other district performance items that we have been consistent with in the past. First thing I would like to start with is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Remember, we haven't tested in a couple of years. Last year was the first time we tested in a two-year period because of COVID-19. So last year was really the first leap back in from students to the standardized testing. So keep that in mind as we go through. Just a quick reminder. Performance levels for NJSLA, there are five levels. As we go through and see some of the tests match up with four levels, but for our first part of the presentation, it's five levels. Level one means not yet meeting grade level expectations, all the way up to level five, which is exceeding grade level expectations. And first slide here represents both the grade levels in English Language Arts and Literacy for the NJSLA. And during this presentation, like I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of numbers to look at. I always like to direct your attention all the way over to the right side. The numbers in green. And those two columns represent the district, percent of district students that are greater than a level four and five, which is either meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. And then next to that far, the column furthest to the right, that's the state's performance using that same criteria, the percent of students that are greater or equal to level four and five. So as you can see, as you move through each one of those grade levels, like we consistently do, we score significantly above the state in most categories, most grade levels. And these numbers, you know, we hear a lot about in the press about learning loss, that student scores declining. We have mentioned over the last year or so that overall statistically, when it comes to standardized testing, our students have performed pretty consistently despite the two years of COVID-19 that fragmented their scoring a little bit. But on average, in most categories, we scored, you know, consistent with how we had done. So that's, that's a great tribute to, you know, programs we really put together those couple of years. Mathematics, grades three through eight, including Algebra I, Geometry at high school, Algebra I at first, Algebra I at high school. And again, you see the comparison all the way on the right side from the state performance and then the, you know, the Montfort Township School performance. You know, one of the things that I'll highlight here is that I'm sure some people might have some questions, would be the grade eight score. If you look at that, it's 24%, you know, of students to the four or bottom range. The state, you know, significantly lower. That score is a little bit of an anomaly for us. We don't really have, you know, a strong feeling why that is as low as it is. There's some comfort knowing that the state's even lower, you know, and particularly low in an eighth grade test. Our math supervisor has looked at that closely. She looked at the evidence tables that you get from that test to kind of figure out where our students are going wrong. And we're looking about correcting that. But that's one of those things, you know, across the state and Montfort wasn't excluded, one of those anomalies that we don't have a great explanation for. But that's something we're, you know, continue to look at. On the outside of that, though, you see our Algebra I score with 97% of the students at those R. Those are typically more capable math students taking Algebra in eighth grade. That's a very high percentage. You compare that to the state, you know, it's not even close. And then we move through some of the other scores with the Algebra I at high school. And of course, geometry saw a significant increase from two years ago. But that's the NJSLA mathematics scores across all those grade levels. We can't forget about science. That's for the first time, science will impact the district report card, who's actually worked, but we also have one this year. And again, those scores in comparison to the state, you know, you can see the differences there. Not the numbers we're used to seeing, but with the science test, and they seem to keep changing the test. It was a field test last time, and now they're implementing it for the first time. So I think there's still a lot of things that may be ironed out at the state level in dealing with, you know, the standardized test for science. One of the requirements that the New Jersey Department dictates is that we have to break out the testing performance in subgroups. So again, I'll direct your attention all the way to the right, and that's the district percent of students that fall in greater than level four of our specialized students in English Language Arts. There is a state comparison for this category, so it's a similar to our district performance. We also broke out the subgroup Special Education from Mathematics. And you see those percentages on the outside. And these are all those areas that we're working with, you know, the special case managers, IDP programs, and, you know, always trying to improve those scores. And then finally, science, we have to break that out for subgroup of Special Education also. And then you see the numbers, the numbers there. Another requirement is to break out the subgroup of race on the standardized test scores. So the trend that we've seen consistently over the last decade or so since I've been here is generally to break it down by Asian, Hispanic, and white students. And you can see the comparison there. Historically, racial population performs at the highest level of almost three, followed by the white and then Hispanic students at elementary level in English Language Arts. We see that same pattern in mathematics consistently. And this testing session was no different. And again, you see a comparison there of the three ethnic groups across the spectrum in mathematics with your NJSLA. And then finally, we broke it down in science by using those same three ethnic groups. Remember, the science test is given in tests in, science is given in grades five, grade eight, and eleven. Something I mentioned before. That brings us to the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment that was administered last year. When our students took the test, at that point, it was considered needed for graduation. They had to pass it to graduate. Shortly after we administered the test, Governor Murphy decided that the test wouldn't count before we received results. And they're going to simply make a field test last year. So the scores I'm going to share with you now really don't count. Frankly, it's a field test. I'm surprised we're required to report out on it, but nonetheless, we are. But these numbers don't really impact us at all as far as graduation. It will next year for the class of 24, 25, but not for the class of 20, 23. And this assessment, at least the field test, broke it down really into two categories. The percentage of students not yet graduation ready, whatever that means, I'm not sure. The state hasn't clarified that yet. And graduation ready. And you can see the 11th graders at Montfort Township High School, 37% of the students are deemed not graduation ready in Life Language Arts. The state as a whole, 61% of the state high school 11th graders are considered not ready to graduate. And then, of course, we broke that out. The students with IDPs also, which is a requirement. And then you see the comparison on the right side of the percentage of students graduation ready. Again, we don't really know what that means yet. We're hoping that this field test, the state releases some more information about what that actually means. You know, interestingly, 95% of our students get accepted to college. But this test seemed to take the 37% of them more graduation ready. Doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, but nonetheless, those scores. This is how it breaks down mathematics, a little bit better here. In the area of math, 19% of our students deemed not yet graduation ready. Near to 50% of the state. So essentially, the state's saying 50% of our students aren't ready to graduate in mathematics. And again, there's students without IDPs, there's a performance. And again, required to break it out by ethnic group. And here's how Hispanic, Asian, and white students perform in English Language Arts. The percentage of graduation ready students broken out by ethnic group. And there's the breakout of those same groups in mathematics on the GPA test. This is a new category that I'm working on this year. We haven't included, I haven't included this in the past. This is one of those things that the state has emphasized that we do need to report out on. Not a lot of members here really share. Our English Language Learner students, or ESL students, take a suite of assessments called the ACCESS test. As you can see, I put the explanation there. They're assessed in four domains, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And all of our students go through that to see if they qualify to exit the program. Out of the 75 who tested, a total across the district, elementary, middle school, and high school, six of them received a score where they're graduating from needing those services in the district. And this looks a little on the lower side, but a large percentage of these students have not been able to sit long. So usually takes a little time for us to graduate. Our ELL learners, you know, added their ESL classes. Numbers that we may be more familiar with, here are our average scores for the ACP in each one of these subject areas. And of course, you can see the three columns there. It's our high school compared to the state and the average across the nation. These numbers are pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past. There are really no statistically significant differences in how our high students perform. And our SAT scores here, you saw a slight increase in this, but a lot of it would be probably related to students taking it during the COVID couple of years. But again, these scores are consistent, if not a little bit higher than what our students have performed in the past. Information that we always like to share, this is over the last three years. We've achieved national merit finalists, 11; semifinalists, 11; commended students, 64; and one national merit scholar reward. So I always like to share that information. Additionally, we like to profile and highlight our AP exams. They were given in 26 subjects. And 73% of our students scored three or higher. And three in many colleges, three to five is considered passing and could be considered for college credit. And you can see the breakdown there. 123, 12 students scored five on AP exams. 186 scored four, and 190 students scored a three. It's generally consistent with how our students have done in the past. Also, AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Distinction, and AP Scholar with Honor. And I can share with you a little bit of definition of what those are. It's actually quite impressive. The first one, AP Scholar with Honor, we had 24 of those students. And that's granted to students who receive an average score of at least a 3.25 on all AP exams taken. And they scored three or higher on four or more of those exams. So that's quite an honor to be able to do that. AP Scholar with Distinction, we had 31 students, I'm sorry, 37 students. And those students received an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams. And scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. So that's also a pretty impressive number. And then finally, AP Scholars, we had 44 of those. And those are granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. So that's the data part of standardized tests. So what's the district do with that data? This is the first step that we typically do when we receive the test scores from the New Jersey Department of Education and how our students did on that aggregate standardized test that they shared with you. And it's a collaborative effort between the principals, supervisors, and teachers to look at the raw data, to assess the standards that our students answered pretty well in and some of the standards that we may have missed. We look at individual questions, we do an item analysis, we look at students' responses, and try to see if there's anything within our program, within our curriculum, that we could add, strengthen, pay more attention to, to try to address some of those areas that the tests indicated that we may need some improvement. Grade level required meetings are held to discuss the data with teachers as part of the regular monthly meetings to look at that and determine, you know, what's the data tells us and how can we improve what we do from an instruction curriculum and also school and sequence of the curriculum basis. The next steps, some of the things that we are utilizing our grant monies for, the SRR2 and SRR3 funds. And you can see a list of a few things there. We have academic, after-school academic support, which has been very popular to help our students that are struggling. Summer camp for BSI and ESL students for skill building. We increased ESL and BSI staffing to meet the increasing needs in those areas. Teacher instructional coaches in math and science are in consideration for 23 and 24. Again, using that SRR grant money that we received from the government. We continue with higher rated diagnostic instruction, which is a big part of our literacy program, our assessment program. And also, one of our district goals this year is to address mental health. And mental health tier two and three support for students is something that's also one of the emphasis, especially coming off of a couple of years of the pandemic. Just to continue that, professional development is something that's always ongoing, that we structure around trying to improve in the areas I just shared. And you can see there, psy out elevation for teachers in English Language Learners. This is professional development for all teachers to help them develop some skills to help meet the needs of those students in our classrooms. Some instructional strategies and exploitation of the science curriculum, all things that are ongoing across the district this school year. And a couple of things not academic that we liked to also include in this yearly presentation, our forensics team, which is pretty well-known, not only in the community of New Jersey, but nationwide and in the top 1% of schools. They had multiple national tournaments in 2022 that they experienced great success in qualifying and placing in the national speech and debate tournaments, seven categories. Three students were selected for the Fresh Perspectives Exhibition at the Morris Museum. And 150 students were selected for that group and technically driven to high school in state. So once again, our students at Montfort Township High School have separated themselves in many areas. Our FBLA program is still very strong. We had tall students qualified to work and compete in the National Edition Conference in Chicago at variety events. So it's always good to see that their success continues year after year. And our SEAL by Literacy program, we had 22 students who were recognized for that. Two of them earning international in two languages in addition to English. So that's an impressive accomplishment. Also, it's for our World Language Program, you know, continues to itself. Moving on, athletics, as a full program that we built for our students. You can see with a lot of team accomplishments last year, whether it be division champions, county champions, group champions, state tournament runner-ups and things like that. So as you hear, you know, our student director weren't here tonight, but they continue to share with you, you know, ongoing success of athletic programs. And our individual athletes. Once again, we have terrific athletes across the district. And here's just a few bullet points of some of the accomplishments that individual athletes were able to earn over the course of last year. And to finish up, our class of 2022 graduates, I mentioned this number earlier in the presentation, 95% attended college and university. And you see the breakdown there, 88% of four-year colleges, 6% of two-year colleges, and about 5% of our students after graduation move on to other things like military employment. Some take a gap year, some go to work. And I also included in the presentation, college acceptancees over the past three years, just to give you an idea of highlighting some of the schools that our students have applied to and were accepted to. And that concludes the presentation. So I haven't seen any questions, Karen?
Thank you very much, Dr. Shorter. That's your annual presentation here. It's very interesting, the sort of numbers and the successes that we've had in all areas, academic and non-academic. And I thank you for that. Any board members have any questions of Dr. Shorter at this time? Okay, thank you very much. And we look forward to hearing this again next year.
Yeah.
Okay, hopefully we'll have more information as the state can clean up the rap along.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick single question?
Sure.
If you don't mind, Dr. Shorter. Simple question. Are we going to be continuing our skill building summer camp?
Yes, I know. Ms. Woodruff is in charge of that, so I think she's shaking her head. So yes, that's something we'll do.
And the after-school academic support as well?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the next step is we have included those reports. It looks like we don't let it wait this month. And I fear the other schools will come along in future months. Now look at, excuse me. Reports, finance and facilities, Karen?
No report.
Curriculum and instruction, David?
No report.
Policy and personal, Mr. Ryan?
There will be one or two policies implemented in the upcoming two weeks.
Communications, Michelle?
Yes, the communications committee had a meeting prior to our closed session today and spoke about a lot of interesting topics. What is that you're hiring a new position to your elder current as your communications officer officially, part-time, although we all know she's been a coordinator. She will now be full-time in that role. In addition to her current role, she'll also be the coordinator of special projects, which will enable our district to really go to the next level of some of the communication. Some, and actually, her position's starting today, November 1st. There's a lot of new communication efforts that are being done because of the district, with the public esteem, superintendents, monthly column. There's also a bi-monthly Montfort Moments newsletter that's coming out, trying to increase the presence on social media in effective ways. We have a lot of community, you know, just there are so many amazing things happening every day all over schools. We need to always highlight that in a more effective way. The other big thing happening on the communications front is our new district website. There was a committee put together that looked at various vendors, or different vendors, who really had a lot of meetings analyzed. They selected the vendor of Actegy to move towards, moving to a new website, which will be launched in the next school year. So a lot of work is going to be happening in the policy for this school year, a lot of work with Austin and his group in the IT department, working with Sumer and that will be in the station. To, one of the things about Actegy, it's a very, it's in the same app. A lot of parents really, and people today in general, really use their phones more than the computers providing immediate information. And it's very friendly in terms of how the information will get out to parents and the community in general from their phones, from an app perspective in a much more streamlined way. There's been a lot of work going to investigating this. And I think the district is really exciting about the direction that we're going to be able to move to for this. There's easier to navigate. So we'll be providing, I think, as a trophy, a trophy year, and we'll be guarding these access.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Safety and security, Mike Rattaport.
No.
Ladies on the school boards, Karen?
Thank you, Charlie. As many of you know, last week, New Jersey School Boards conducted their annual workshop. And Workshop 2022 was a huge success. The first day saw three thousand attendees, which exceeded expectations. There were hundreds of learning opportunities, terrific networking opportunities, and the absolute most fantastic student performances. Overall, it was a great opportunity to learn and to have fun and meet with more colleagues around the entire state.
Thank you, Karen. Morris County School Boards, Mr. Auburn?
I have no report since the last report, and they are leaving shortly, three days.
Thank you. Morris County Educational Services, Joe?
No report this time, or next meeting is next Wednesday.
Droger awareness, Joe? Your name is, there's a, it does a week. Athletic posters, Mr. Auburn?
No, no one needed to report.
Ladies on Cedar Hill, Karen?
No report.
Building on the board value?
The next meeting is in January.
Christine Franco-Mason?
So there was no meeting, but I want to make a shout out to all the parents and community members that they're hosting their big charity trade, Denning Diets, who are still looking for items and to sell wrap the tickets.
Thank you. Woodmont, Mike, on? Lazard? No report. High School?
Next meeting is next Monday, 7th. I guess since the students' report here, we should just mention that the ball play is occurring I guess since the students left for here, we should just mention that the ball play is occurring this week, the third, or the fifth, 12 minutes.
I remember on the board too, the National Health Society has adopted a rule on November 16th. I'm sure they're still pretending to keep this practice. The meetings coming up is a lot. Okay, this is an opportunity for any members who would love to ask questions on the agenda items. If you'd like to see them begin any questions on the agenda items, only at this point, at the end of the meeting, we could ask general questions.
Okay. No, I have a question about the presentation.
I can answer that.
I have a question about the presentation.
Oh, okay, that would be cool.
No, okay. I just have a question about the I.
Just speak into the microphone, please.
I have a question about the I instruction and about the tier mental health. If you could explain that.
Yeah, the I ready, you've got the instruction.
And the tier mental health, if you could just explain that a little bit.
Yeah, I prefer that I'm super brief, if I can explain that a little bit.
So I ready is an instructional and diagnostic program for grades K through eight. It's computer-based. The students take an assessment, and it's adaptive. And then we look at those results, and then there's an instructional component that helps. It's within the areas of math and English language arts literacy. And we use that as another data point along with state assessments and what those teachers are seeing in the classroom to determine where our students are with proficiency towards the standards. That's been in the district probably now about six years. The mental health tier two and tier three programs, as part of the SR2, SR3 grants, we were given money towards that purpose by the federal government. And we have an outside agency that has satellite offices within our buildings, and they work with some of our students who need more clinical therapy than our in-house psychologists and social workers can provide.
Who's the outside agency?
It's called Tri-County Behavioral Associates.
Okay, and are the councilors?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, they have to give consent in order for the students to be seen by the councilors.
All right, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. My next part is to set the motion on the agendas for items I through M. There's one change, there's an agenda, Mr. Slump stand out, K9, and there's a slight revision in J3. It's the numbers that the suit intended to plan to us. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move. Second, second.
Before we go to the paper, we do have Tom Ossman comment on behalf of the board for one of our employees, who is resigning.
Tom? So for L2, we have this Diane Tyman. She's retiring. She's served as a parent professional in the Mount Montpelot Township School District since 2004. Having experienced almost all the elementary grades this time, has been responsible for providing supplemental instruction to children under the guidance of classroom and special education teachers. She has been highly effective in motivating children to stay on task and complete their work in a timely fashion. Benchmarks and other assessments indicate that our efforts have significantly benefited the children's progress. In addition, this is timeless, I'm sorry, compassionate demeanor and positive feedback has helped bolster students' confidence and self-esteem. We wish her well, retiring.
We do wish her well. Thank you very much, Tom. Mr. Slump, roll call, please, on I through N, with the two changes that I mentioned, agenda revised J3.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cortalina?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanna?
Yes.
Dr. Mudra?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes, I'm staying on the minute.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes. There is no meeting for closed meetings this evening. Section Q, old business of the Board of Education. We will be meeting again on November 15th, however, that meeting will be at the High School DSA. Section R, any general board comment, new business?
Well, I do, Charlie. I was able to see a presentation, a panel of addiction experts, our Morris County Sheriff, our Chief of Police, a Montpelot mom who lost her beautiful son to an accidental overdose, an addiction professional, and a therapist. And the message that we got was very motivating is that to tell the kids that no street drug is safe, that fentanyl is showing up everywhere, and it could be in everything, including marijuana on the street, and that children, kids, and young adults are dying every day just by experimenting. So it was very, very sad, but we're making great efforts in the county. But just to, I just wanted to put it out there in the public that no street drug is safe, to tell our kids.
Thank you. Public participation is an opportunity for any member of the public to come forward, any questions, statements they'd like to make before the Board of Education. Since I don't see anybody coming forward this time, I would entertain a motion to return, please.
Don't move. A second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and for which, as I mentioned, is on the record.